Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of Hamilton City Council, Saturday, the eleventh, 2024. Bill after six o'clock. You're here in City Council Chambers at 345 High Street in Hamilton. Rule call, please.
Mohler.
Present.
Pullman.
Present.
Fear.
Present.
Vaughn.
Present.
Ryan.
Present.
Nab.
Present.
Lauer.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We're going to start off with an offering of prayer by Councilmember Call of Fear, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you are able.
Heavenly Father, as we come to the end of this year, we are thankful for your many wonderful deeds in our lives. We pray for your blessings on our thoughts, our discussions, and our decisions in the new year, as we continue to be ever mindful of our responsibility to the people we serve in Hamilton. Let your own reflections spark hope for new beginnings. Please hear our prayers, spoken and unspoken. We ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we next go to special presentations. And we've got two really great presentations about great things that have happened in Hamilton and continue to happen in Hamilton. So the first one's going to be involving Hamilton Turkey Drop and the Turkey Trot. So we're all going to come up here at the same time and go over these events and how successful they were this year. So come on up here to the middle. See how many we could put in up here. Since you're speaking first, I'm going to have you first. Second. This is already working out tremendously.
Wow.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Get your room up there. Go ahead and go up. We'll make it work. All right. Is everybody ready to go with this? Okay. The city has a lot to be thankful for, obviously, in 2024. I don't think any city our size does Thanksgiving like what we did Thanksgiving in 2024. Not only these particular three events, but there were church events, community events, but these three are just really, really special ones. And these folks here and all the folks behind them really put the giving in Thanksgiving, and you're going to find out a little bit why. Okay, let's do Hamilton Turkey first, and that's what's up on the screen right now. And those are some amazing numbers up there. Fed 5,000 people, six different buffets. I mean, I can't describe what you did. You're going to describe what you did.
Well, honestly, I don't.
The team behind you.
Yeah, it wasn't me. We had a lot of people. I mean, you've got 30 to 40 people that kind of came together for this and really, you know, really starts with the whole ha-ha idea, which, you know, "Rise and hide, raise low boats," quoted by Jim Goodman or JFK. I usually quote to him right here. Really kind of coming together, right? So ha-ha came together during COVID. Restaurants were in a kind of tough spot. And Hamilton Turkey was really the first year for us to kind of, we did this last year as a way for the restaurants to get back to the community. So in year one, we fed 700 people. Year two, we got some great partners. We moved up to over 5,000. So Shared Harvest was huge. They donated 1,000 turkeys. Terry from Shared Harvest was a huge asset. The different local nonprofits were all easy to work with. I mean, overall, I mean, there was a lot of planning, but this actually was pretty efficiently, pretty efficient and relatively easy to make happen. You know what I mean? And I think honestly, we could have fed more. I think that's the coolest thing is that we could have done more. We had more food. We could have gotten more turkey. So we just need more connections to people who may need this. So like to make it bigger and bigger as it goes on. But yeah, it was amazing. And the collaboration piece was the biggest, biggest thing. I really don't think you get that from most cities. Hamilton came together in a big way and really made this happen. So it was cool.
That's amazing. 5,000 people were fed in a town of 63,000. That's a pretty high percentage of people. And then we've got at least one of the hosts up here, and that was Tommy John, the Boys and Girls Club. Now the opportunity to attend that. And that was just an amazing community event.
Oh, yeah.
Meal, and maybe one of the first meals that they ever had as a community sit-down event.
Yeah.
And people like you just led the way on that. And but your name came up so often in this. So you really truly led this, and that's incredible.
Well, thank you. I mean, it's just, you know, it's really my honor to be a part of it. And just, it's fun to work with all those folks, you know what I mean? Like, it's just seeing the restaurants have come together over the past couple of years. We open more and more and invited more and more people to the town. It's always been a cool thing. But to also see that happen with the nonprofits, the arts, everything else, like, again, it's the epitome of "we is greater than me." You see that across the entire city at this point. It's pretty impactful, you know?
A round of applause for Tyler. All right. Now, this is, this was a really fun event. And, and that's Jim, that's you speaking up there. That's, we picked that out specially because you spoke at Casual Pint. The folks who are behind this, and correct me if I'm wrong, is Municipal Brewworks, Jim Goodman, Rothan Tony from Poorhouse. Tyler, I think you were involved in this too. Is that correct?
Yeah, a little bit.
That's your second gold medal for the day. Okay. Anne Marie from Casual Pint. Mike Farmer, you're, what the heck are you doing back there? Mike, come on up there. No, there's space for you up here. You're the beneficiary of this event, and you were there as well. And of course, Hamilton Fire Department, and then many others. But I think, again, only you could probably describe this event better than anybody else.
So Hamilton Turkey Drop started, last year was the first one. This was the second one we did. The first one was just laughing so hard, belly laughing at the thought of the old WKRP in Cincinnati episode where they dropped turkeys from a helicopter. And the famous line in the quote, "As God is my witness, I thought turkeys could fly." And we laughed so hard at that. And we said, what if we could do something like that here? And we thought about little rubber ducks dressed like turkeys, and you drop them from a height onto targets, and we get donations and prizes, and people could buy these turkeys, and we could take the money from the, from the proceeds of those turkeys and/or ducks and present them to a cause. So, you know, the, one of the fun and the best things about the ha-ha group and really the, the business community as a whole is fun for a cause. That's really what, what it's about. Because coming together for the "we is greater than me" and creating fun for, for a cause, it doesn't take much to get people behind you to do that. And that says a lot about this city. So we did it the first year, and we sold 120 turkeys in 24 hours. So this year, we upped the ante to 470 turkeys. We brought in Poorhouse. We brought in Tonos. And there's Municipal Brewworks and Casual Pint again to try and do that whole kind of mark and block. We sold through all 470 of the turkeys. The Hamilton Fire Department came. They dropped them onto targets. They were all numbered. So people that, when they bought the turkey, whatever number they got, whoever was closest got the prizes. We raised over $3,000 for the Hamilton Veterans Park and the memorial wall. We brought in Chatterbox Sports to play the 1978 version of the actual WKRP in Cincinnati episode, which had even more funny lines than I remembered. So it was just a wonderful time. I think it was on Thanksgiving Eve. It was just a great reason for people to come together.
Somebody in this audience wants some money.
Yes. Joel, where's Joel? What did you do?
I never seen it. You definitely gave it back. I saw that. I was there for that. I witnessed that. So, alrighty. Excuse me one second. Now, Poorhouse. You're involved in this.
We're just happy to be a part of it. Past two years here in the city, I've never felt such a sense of community. And like they were speaking on it, "we is greater than me," and we feel that. It motivates us to do more in this city, and we hope to continue to do things just like this and make them even better. So next year, I think we have a nice target. I'm not going to put that number out there, but.
It's there.
It's there. We have a nice target number for all these turkeys. So thanks for allowing us to be a part of this. You guys make it really easy on us.
Tyler, you want to say a few words about the whole event, about the drop, the Turkey Drop?
A little bit. It's definitely more of Jim and Anne Marie's brainchild, you know? But I mean, just like you said, the fun for a cause, you know, like, being in the restaurant industry, it's crazy. You never know what you're going to get in the hospital industry on a day-by-day basis. But when we can have a good time, raise some money, and, you know, have, you know, just have everybody laughing around, we're going to do it every time, you know? Like, when we created Ha-Ha, which, you know, Jim and Anne Marie and all this with the chamber kind of did that, it'd be four years in January, you know, we wanted to be the laughter and joy, people that bring laughter and joy to Hamilton. And if we can do so and help the people out, why would we not do that, you know? We all like to have a good time, but it makes much better when you know there's, you know, some effort behind it. And the hope is that the people of Hamilton know that the more they support us, the small businesses, the more we can support the community, you know? So when you come and, you know, you put the dollars here, it's really all just a big pay it forward. So, I mean, the ask is just keep doing that, and we'll keep doing what we're doing, and have a good time while we do it, you know?
All right. Anne Marie could not make it, but I asked her for a quote, and this is what she said. Anne Marie from Casual Pint. "The Hamilton Turkey Drop is a great example of what happens when we mix love of community with collaborative spirit, and then sprinkle in creativity and fun. We are better together, and I look forward to doing so much more of this in the future." So I continue to hear from this group up here. "We is greater than me," collaboration, having fun, but also raising money for good causes. And this year's cause was the Butler County Veterans Memorial Wall. And we have Mike Farmer here from Butler County Veterans Service Commission.
Good evening, and thanks for having us here this evening to witness this. But a special thanks to the small businesses in the city of Hamilton. The Butler County Veterans Memorial is in Veterans Park on New London Road. We have 21 veterans that have died in service of our community and country while in combat, and their names are not on the current memorial. So our goal is by September 28th of 2025, to dedicate a brand-new memorial in Veterans Park in the city of Hamilton. And we're, we're very, very fortunate for small businesses like the city of Hamilton has, and we are well on our way to that goal. We have some small things to accomplish and some concepts, designs coming out. But very fortunate to be here tonight to just kind of say thank you to the, to the businesses that put this on. And I'm just one small piece of the committee, but very honored to be here. And thank you so much to the city of Hamilton and to the small businesses for getting the recognition for the veterans who are on that wall. And if you've ever spoken to a Gold Star family, I'll end with this note. The most important thing to those who lost a son or daughter in combat for our freedoms is that you always say their name. And as long as we say their name, it's believed that they're still with us, and they're, they didn't die without cause and without sake. So that's the point of the memorial. It's a place to go and reflect, and it's just so meaningful to the veterans and the community. So thank you for everything that Hamilton does.
All right. This really defines giving through different events, different concepts. Now, third one is the Hamilton Turkey Trot. And we're going to do, Mike, you take that one. I'll take this one. All right. Now, this started, if I'm not mistaken, 10 years ago in Highland Park, getting together near somebody's garage and then taking off running. Is that basically right?
That's correct.
All right. I think it's up on the screen right now. So you tell us about the Turkey Trot for 2024, and throw the past history in too, if you would.
Sure. Hi, I'm Katie Powers, and I have an awesome team sitting here in the audience that comes together throughout the year to put on this event. We started, the picture was up there, in my driveway 10 years ago. We had 30 people come out and ran through Highland Park. Almost no one got lost. And then we, we had some fun. So we decided, let's do this again. The next year, we had 360 people. We moved to Wilson Middle School, and it just continued to grow from there to the point of outgrowing Wilson Middle School. And for the past five years, we've been in downtown Hamilton, running through some of the neat revitalization of the city, which has been so fun to see grow as our race has grown. So this past year, we had 2,470 participants come out. We had 120 volunteers to make that happen, and we had two mascots this year. So that was fun. We've had Xander, and this year we got to add Rosie Redd. And all of this takes place to benefit a ministry that's happening in the city of Hamilton. It's been going on for 13 years to care for our teen moms, our adolescent parents, and their children, called Young Lives. And so we are so grateful that we've gotten to raise the funds to not only support that ministry for our, our students to go to camp in the summer, but to really underwrite the whole program for the year. And we've, we've been able to add staff. Next year, we hope to add a program specifically for our teen dads as well. We, we nearly hit, we're still calculating, this only happened recently, but around $80,000 this year. So over the past 10 years, we've been able to raise around $300,000 to care for our ministry of young lives and our teen moms and their littles. And so I would love to highlight Sue here and her son, Alexander, who, she's been a part of the Young Lives program for seven years. It's an incredible program that provides one-on-one mentorship for our teen moms, as well as monthly meetings where they're gathering together. And just being able to have that fellowship and community with one another, it's close to my heart. It's close to the heart of our, our team. It's why we do it. And also, it's been super cool to see how the community has really rallied around that. Just want to, again, give the opportunity for Sue to share a couple of things about her experience.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. I have a speech. I have it written down. My name is Sue Sanchez, and me and my two sons have been a part of Young Lives for seven years. I'm on my fifth year participating in the Thanksgiving Run, which supports Hamilton Young Lives. I know personally that the race and what is raised is greatly used to change the lives of young mothers and their children. Young Lives helped me when I needed support and not able to help other young moms. Thanks to the race, I've gone to camp twice and enjoyed the friendship of club and our mentors. I'm thankful for the Young Lives community and for what it means to me and my son. Thank you.
Thanks, Sue. So I want to finish with saying just thanks so much to the city. Thanks to the Fire Department and the Police Department for helping keep all of our runners safe as they ran through downtown Hamilton. And this year, for our 10K, we expanded and got to see more and more people coming into the community. So half of our participants are local from Hamilton, and then half are coming from Cincinnati, from Fairfield, from Westchester, and even from 27 different states. And we, we had actually seven different countries represented. Our virtual run helps to support the ministry in 30 different countries around the world. So anybody who decides, I'm not in town for Thanksgiving, or has a connection that is outside of the city, can still participate and still get their Turkey Trot shirt and medal wherever they are. So that's been really fun to, to know that Hamilton is being, the, the medal that has Billy Yank on it, or Alexander Hamilton this year, the shirt has Billy Yank, all over the, all over the country and all over the world. It's being, Hamilton is being made known. And one of the fun parts of our race that I love every year is called the Crash and Dash. And Greg Erwin started this when it was in our neighborhood, and you all on council can check in your little bags. You got a drumstick, if you want to pull that out.
Why don't we all come up a little bit forward, so Greg can do a crash and dash all the way around council.
So in true celebration of all of the things that are going on for Thanksgiving in Hamilton, Greg is going to give everyone the opportunity to experience the Crash and Dash right here. So.
When they started, I don't know, eight years ago, they asked us to come out and show our spirit when they ran by. So we crushed symbols. It's developed into what's called the Crash and Dash. We hand out sticks. They grab the sticks, and they crash. And we actually had signature sticks made this year. And this is a historic, no city council has ever done this before. And so the sticks are ready. It's called, I'm going to dash, and you do the crash, so you can sit and sock it. So this is it, everybody, the crash and dash.
All right. Everybody else come back up here for just a second, because I want to make sure I'm not missing anybody out in the audience who should be recognized. Tyler, anybody here that you might recognize for what helped you with the Hamilton Turkey?
Tommy John, for sure. I mean, boys, since he came to town, I mean, what, what work he's done, you know? It's incredible. You know, he's been a big part of this for Hamilton Turkey, year one, year two, and just an all-around great human being. So lucky to be a friend of yours. Appreciate you being here, and thanks for everything you do.
Handoff to Jim. Anybody here that you might recognize is out there right now?
Everyone that participated, the, the staffs at the various businesses that, that were a part of this. Big thanks to Hamilton Fire Department. Big thanks to Chatterbox Sports.
Just a big thanks to our team that works throughout the year, for Kami and Debbie, for Angie and Mark, for Greg and Lorraine for coming out and supporting the race, and for everybody who just cheers us on and cheers on the runners as we run through the city.
All right. Thank you all very much for what you do to make Thanksgiving such a special, meaningful holiday, because you really have done that. Everybody here, thank you.
Thank you. I'll take all the praise.
They move those flags closer. That's what, that's exactly what they did.
Yeah, this tight back there.
Okay, I want to reflect on the record that Councilmember Call of Fear had to leave to attend to a matter at 6:22. So for the record, that's when she left. All right. Another special person's going to walk up here and tell us about his, his history of Hamilton class. If you want to get that in person, you can get that at the, at the Log Cabin on Saturdays, where you can walk into the Log Cabin, and he's probably reading the book, as Chris is, about history. He likes reading biography. So I walk in there, it's a different biography each time. And Chris is a special educator in our city. And come tell us about your history of Hamilton class, if you would, please. Introduce yourself, what city you're from, because that's also kind of interesting.
I am Chris Marcello, and I am from Buffalo, New York. Actually, Amherst. Same hometown as Councilman Nab. Who would have thought, two guys from Buffalo standing in a room in Hamilton, Ohio. Thank you for letting me come tonight. I mean, there's so much I could say about this class, and a lot of you in this room have experienced it firsthand. And this is just one of, a lot of special things that are happening at the freshman campus. Teaching 14-year-olds is not easy, especially this time of year. It's very exhausting. When you have good colleagues, you have a good boss, and you believe in your mission, it reinvigorates you, even someone who's been in it for 30-plus years. So the birth of this class was actually the two people, I think. My principal still doesn't know quite sure, but I believe it was him and Tyler Blue, the two Tylers, who ironically enough, were students of mine at seventh grade at Wilson. So that makes me feel very old. But, and then the irony of it all is that 30 years ago this year, I did my student teaching at Wilson with Jim Blunt, who really taught me everything I know. And in a lot of ways, I feel like I'm just carrying on the baton that he passed on to me. So when I was kind of approached with this class, I had a vision. I didn't want it to be a straight, boring history class. History is very important, more so now than ever. But I also wanted our kids to be engaged in the community. I wanted them to keep up with current events. I have a kind of a private nickname for this class. It's a nursery for future Hamilton leaders. So in our spring planning session in 2023, I was given a day at, at school. And during the course of that day, I had some visitors. One was Kathy Clink, and one was Brandon Sarber, who I think were there to give me inspiration and ultimately the papal blessing for the class. So I felt like I had some good, good credibility there. But let me just tell you a little about the class. So the class is just not history, okay? It involves cultural issues like the arts, architecture, industry, government, local business, education, entertainment, current events, and most importantly, the 17 neighborhoods of Hamilton. The class engages students with leaders from various sectors of the city life, including city government, fine arts, parks, education, industry, law enforcement, fire department, infrastructure, and local business leaders. People who I believe have a unique Hamilton story and who I believe in their own way make Hamilton a better place to live, work, and play. Here's just a, a small sampling of the people who have come and spoke to our students in the last year and a half. Pat Mohler, Joshua Smith, Greg Bukite, Brandon Sarber, Tommy John, Ian McKenzie Thurli, Tyler McCleary, who was just in our class this morning, Kathy Clink, Liz Hayden, Scott Smallwood, Tyler Smallwood, Joe and Joni Kokas, Michael Pittman, Pastor Curtis Moke, Dan Bates, Miles Davidson, another former student of mine, Dwayne Moore, Bob Harris, who I think somewhere in this room, Ebony Brock, Dr. Ashley Hopkins, Brad Spurlock, Councilman Michael Ryan, Sammy Broyles, Dan Schneider, Jim and Laura Goodman, John Gajuli, Jacob Stone Welch, Adriana Reyes, Carrie Hallam, Andrea Blevins. And there is more to come next semester. The students also have two citywide field trips, one to downtown in German Village, and next week, an all-day bus tour of all 17 neighborhoods with lunch and pinball at Pinball Garage, compliments of Brad Baker. The class includes history units like Fort Hamilton and early settlement, the two towns of Hamilton and Rossville, canals and railroads, industry, flood, wars, the immigration stories of the Irish, Germans, Jewish, Black, Italian, Appalachian, and Hispanics who have enriched the lives in our community. And of course, issues like the Renaissance that's going on as we speak, and a study in depth of all 17 Hamilton neighborhoods. We have two projects, the Hamilton Legendary Locals Biography Research Project and the 17 Strong Neighborhoods Capstone Project, which we'll be doing next week. I'm actually looking for another judge, so if any of you are available next Tuesday from 8 to 10. And no tests, no quizzes, no homework, just active participation and a willingness to learn about Hamilton and to make it a better place. I just want to let my, my boss and my colleague have just a few words. Thank you.
I don't know, I was getting the mic tonight, but anybody that calls me Tyler, we go way back. So thank you, Mr. Marcello, for throwing that out on Front Street, my official government name. No, but we really want to celebrate this class. We talked about trying to make Hamilton into one place for a long time. There was, there's division. There's historical division, east, west, different neighborhoods coming together. They all come together under one roof for the first time at the Hamilton freshman campus. So it's been a mission of ours. We thought, who better to teach that history to our students than a local Hamilton historian? So maybe a little bit in his later portion of his career, maybe a little bit jaded. We need to teach these kids about Hamilton. I said, who is "we"? It sounds like "we" is greater than me, and "we" is you. And so we got a committee together, and Mr. Marcello really spearheaded that. And we're really excited to bring some youthful perspectives into that class as well. And again, a former student of mine, so thinking of passing the baton, Mr. Marcello passed the baton to me, and we're passing the baton now to Dallas Robinson, who's bringing a whole new spin on the class. And if you ever come and speak to the class, you'll see a huge difference in the approaches. And I think it's really cool to have a youth perspective teaching that class as well. So we're really excited to teach the history of Hamilton, something I'm passionate about, obviously, if anybody knows me. But we have some great history teachers that are imparting that onto the next generation of Hamilton students.
Hi, my name's Dallas Robinson, and, uh, this is my first year ever teaching this class. It's been a very rewarding experience for me. Uh, two things that it does for our kids, I think it gives them a voice, it lets them feel heard, um, by you guys, by our council members, and also it gives them an opportunity to interact with their community, um, to be engaged in it, and to really learn, uh, what it's about. As a poor Eastside kid growing up, I never knew about half the things that Hamilton had going on, and this class is an opportunity for those kids to discover those things. Um, but all the, uh, all the hard work goes to Chris Marcello and Ty Smallwood. They, they do an amazing job at the FC, and really, it's all them, so I'm just happy to be part of the ride. Yeah.
You want to wrap this up, Chris? Oh, I'm sure you do. Well, then I'll wrap it up. Anybody who's not from Hamilton, Ohio, who is watching TV Hamilton right now, and for the last, I don't know, half an hour or so at least, has got to love this city almost right now because of the events, the giving, the partnership, collaboration, and education. I mean, when you've got people teaching who are proud of the city that they teach in, like these folks are, I, I'm not sure if anybody's saying anything negative about what they've heard about this city in, in the last 30, 45 minutes, because it's all been positive, it's collaboration, it's community, it's giving. I mean, all of us who live in Hamilton sitting up here are blessed to be in the town with you folks helping us.
I do have one thing to say.
Please.
You need some work on your rock paper, rock paper, rock papers.
All right, the story behind that, and I was, I had the, the luck to go ahead and speak to the class. And in the hallway, and Principal Smallwood was taking me to where the, where Chris's class was, there was this really great rock paper scissors contest going on, different classes, it was, it was a lot of fun. Somehow I got pushed up into like the championship round undeservedly, and then this, this young lady, I mean, she didn't want to be there, she wanted to get back to her class, she wanted to do her homework. And it, I, I was great to hear too. I think I made one, the first one, then she smoked me after that. It, it was ugly, but it was fun, brought a smile to my face. These were, these were high-character, high fun, but also they knew the importance of education, because that young lady wanted to get back to class after she smoked me, you know? But, uh, again, it's all part of the experience in Hamilton, because, I mean, I won't forget that. I mean, no, that was a lot of fun. And then to address the students in Dallas's and Chris's class was, was a great opportunity for me to, to learn from them. So again, round, round of applause to these folks now. Okay, that takes care of, uh, special presentations. We now go to audience of citizens. We're going to hear from two other of our fine citizens. Individuals who should make comments may make comments during this part of the agenda or when the item is up for vote on the council floor. All individuals who are speaking are required to sign this blue public speaking book so we know for the record who has spoken at this city council meeting. Uh, each speaker's allowed up to five minutes, and first is Chris Canal. Also a Hamilton resident, born and bred and schooled in this city, right?
58 years.
You ain't that old, man, are you?
Yes, I am.
All right. Chris Canal, another friend of Hamilton.
Thank you. Good evening, Moller, or Mayor Moller, City Council, City Manager. Thank you for letting me speak to you this evening. Uh, I've been asked to give various, uh, updates on the great things happening at the Hamilton City Schools, and so tonight, I've got an update on the Fine Arts Department. Um, new to our elementary schools is the addition of a performing arts club that performs at various community events. Our Linden Elementary Choir performed at the tree lighting ceremony this year. The elementary art teachers partnered with Pyramid Hill to paint pumpkins for Operation Pumpkin, and then they got to, uh, go up to visit Pyramid Hill to see their artwork on display. Our secondary art teacher, Leslie Getz, organized a district-wide super, or district-wide student photo edition for the Fitton Center 17 Strong exhibit. Many of our elementary buildings, uh, held Veterans Day programs where students performed and student artwork was displayed. The Hamilton High School Marching Band made it to the Grand Nationals in Indianapolis this year. They competed against Big Band Schools from Texas, and they are scheduled to compete in, uh, Disney World in January. The Indoor Marching Percussion Ensemble and Winter Guard will start preparing for their competition season soon. Uh, the N-Harmonics was chosen to perform on the main stage at Kettering's Acapella Festival a few weeks ago. Most recently, they were chosen to compete in the International High School Acapella Competition to be held in the spring. Last year, they earned first in quarterfinals, third in semifinals, and were given a chance to submit a wild card entry for the finals in New York City. The Prestige and N-Harmonics are taking a three-day cruise over spring break to learn more about the cruise line entertainment industry. They will have a chance to perform. Our Hamilton High School Orchestra and Band Combo played at, uh, Kris Kendall Mart this past weekend, and N-Harmonics came in third out of 11 groups who competed at OTR's Holly Jolly Jamboree on December 7th. They won $500 to help support their upcoming competition season. And, um, just preparing to see if you were going to ask me, I have looked up how many students that we have gotten employed.
How many?
1,295 in the last three years.
Wow. Chris, that, that's amazing, because you're changing lives by giving them experience, uh, life education outside of school. I mean, uh, the Fine Arts Program, man, they're just really doing great. I mean, national recognition, regional recognition's great, but that national recognition and that high school band is going to be competing further into like a national type of thing?
I, I believe so.
Yeah. I mean, any questions for Chris about the schools at this point in time?
Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, next we have, um, Bob Harris. I think Bob was out there.
He's out there.
Okay. Let the record reflect that, uh, Councilmember Fear is back at, uh, 6:42.
It's snowing like crazy.
Is it?
Yeah.
Are we getting a snow day?
White Christmas, baby.
Lauer's looking for us. He wants snow day to council meeting.
Chris, can you throw a word for us?
There's no day to council meeting. Can't wait to get home to hear it. Mr. Harris?
Bob Harris, 429 South Second Street, President of Southeast Civic Association. And this evening, um, I also would like to share that Southeast, Second and Fourth Ward had a great year. Um, we did get a cleanup off the ground, uh, we attended, uh, the entire board of Southeast, attended, uh, CAC's annual dinner. We, uh, worked in the community with the mayor and Lauer and the city manager, and we hammered out some things, and, uh, a lot of wonderful things happened this year, and we feel like we're getting on track with working together and making things happen. We attended the community, uh, function they had where everybody gets to speak, I guess everybody gets to speak, exactly of, uh, what they, uh, wanted to say and what they liked to see in the city. So I think we, we had a coffee with council. I don't drink coffee, though. Uh, so that was good. Uh, we had the kids out, um, for that day. Uh, we just came together to make some things happen, and I like that. Uh, I got to, uh, walk with, uh, Carla Fear, and we went picking up some paper in the neighborhood, had the city manager, and I had him knocking on the doors, and I had Lauer out knocking on doors, and we just made an extra, extra effort. And I want to thank council. Um, we were able to get the three street namings, and council came out and supported, and each time, we got a little bit better, and I think that we're going to get better for '25. I just want to thank you, you know, from my heart, and, um, hey, I'm going to keep on working until we get better and better and better. So with that, Lauer, this year, you have to walk 14 miles with me.
How many times do we do that?
Well, um, I'm going to make it a challenge. Kathy Klink and I are going to walk. Lauer, um, the challenge is, is that you have to walk with me and you have to be Kathy. Fair deal. So, uh, I want to thank, uh, Chris Marcello for even having me speak at the school, which is good. I, uh, I enjoy speaking to young people, um, teenagers, young adults. I, uh, truly believe a message from somebody that is as young as me is good. So here's what I want to say to you. Merry Christmas to all of you. Merry Christmas to all of Hamilton, and thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you. God bless you. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and let's come back and do it again.
Okay, we now go to the consent agenda. That includes all matters, including staff reports, caucus reports, meeting minutes, information and reports, including the October 2024 financial report and investment report. We're now going to go to the committee of the whole. Now, accept the motion at the regular meeting being recessed, and the committee of the whole take place.
Second.
Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Vaughn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. It is 6:45. This gives council a cha, council a chance to discuss some of the upcoming items that are going to be on the council agenda that are listed in the caucus agenda. So are you ready to lead us in this, Mr. City Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Our first three items will be presented by our, uh, Chief, Chief of the Fire Department, Mr. Thomas Eichelberger. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, member of council, members of council. Tom Eichelberger, Fire Chief, City of Hamilton. Thanks for having me. Um, our first two caucus items are for, um, we are asking to take the pay range for two of our civilian employees, um, and make them consistent with our other civilian employee. They, they all have their own individual, um, assignments that are all equally of value to our department, and we feel like the pay range should be consistent with our civilian employees. And right now, um, there is quite a difference between their pay ranges, and we're just requesting that, um, our Fire Prevention Assistant and our EMS Assistant, uh, be brought up to the same range as our, um, Fire Division civilian employee that is, uh, working under the Operations Bureau and handles our fleet and facilities, and, um, uh, working with vendors in that realm. So that's, that's the purpose behind those two, um, caucus items. Uh, the, the third caucus item for fire this evening is, uh, we're asking for permission to, um, uh, contract with a vendor that we use quite often, Stryker is the, the name of the vendor, and they are a sole source provider for, um, a lot of the EMS equipment that we use on our medic units, uh, the big-ticket items, um, that we would be purchasing. We need to purchase all-new, uh, heart monitors, cardiac monitors. Uh, right now, we use what's called a LifePak 15. Uh, the newest model, um, that we would like to purchase is a LifePak 35. Uh, this would replace all of our monitors. The reason we need to replace those cardiac monitors is because they are, um, they are now, um, so, uh, not antiquated, but they, they are no longer serviceable. The parts, um, and supplies for our vendors that come in and service these for us and make our repairs, um, they are finding it very difficult to even find the supplies and the parts to keep those running, so it's kind of a have-to purchase. Um, so in, in order to make those purchases, we need your permission to, uh, make a sole source contract of that size.
Any questions about any of those three particular caucus agenda items? Thank you, Chief.
Okay, thanks for having me. Uh, the next up for, um, item number five will have a presentation by our Director of Resident Services, Mr. Adam Helms.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Um, here tonight to talk about the creation of the event, um, and content production technician. Um, we're asking to create a new, it's a seasonal position, um, for Rivers Edge concerts. Uh, for the past several years, we've been hiring, uh, mostly college-age, uh, students to help with the stage crew production and set up the stage. On concert days, um, we've been hiring those folks as a position called Seasonal Maintenance Laborer, and it's been really hard to, um, advertise these positions with, with local colleges, tech colleges. Be like, hey, come work for Rivers Edge, get some on the, on the job training, but we're going to hire you as a seasonal maintenance laborer. Um, so it's the same pay range, hourly pay rate, as what we were hiring them as. Uh, we're just asking to create this new position so that we can have some better luck with recruitment and more specific advertising for this position. Any questions? Uh, just each of these positions, they work less than like 500 hours a year, uh, mostly, mostly for the months in the summer to help with, with concerts and such. Any questions?
Questions? Thank you.
And that concludes our presentations.
You. Accept the motion that the committee of the whole be closed.
So moved.
Second. Vice Mayor Councilmember Fear, second by Councilmember Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried, and the committee of the whole is closed at 6:50. Accept the motion to regular meeting and be reconvened.
So moved.
Second.
Vice Mayor Councilmember Nab, seconded by Vice Mayor Pullman. Roll call vote for that motion, please.
Moller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Motion adopted, seven zero.
Meeting was reconvened at 6:51. Now, accept the motion regarding actions pertaining to legislative items.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman?
I move that a note be made upon the minutes that each member of council was furnished a printed copy of each item of legislation prior to its being considered at this meeting.
Second.
Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Nab. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at the time being 6:51. We go into actions pertaining to legislative items, pending legislation, agenda item number six, second reading of an ordinance involving a license and maintenance agreement with Immortal Vibes.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a license and maintenance agreement between the City of Hamilton and Immortal Vibes Incorporated related to the use of a portion of 232 Main Street. P 6411002000076, second reading.
Mayor.
Councilmember Fear?
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Vice Mayor Councilmember Fear, seconded by Councilmember Lauer. Any discussions, comments or discussion on this particular item? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Moller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Orders adopted, seven zero.
And we go to agenda item number seven, second reading of an ordinance involving our 2025 budget.
An ordinance making appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Hamilton, Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2025, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn?
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Vice Mayor Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Ryan. Discussion on this one? Hearing none, roll call.
Moller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Orders adopted, seven zero.
Legislation, agenda item number eight, two readings of, uh, ordinance involving supplemental appropriations.
An ordinance making supplemental appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Hamilton during fiscal year ending December 31st, 2024, first of two readings.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman?
Make a motion that the rules be suspended, said ordinance be read a second time by its title?
Second.
Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by Councilmember Ryan. Comments, oh, sorry, roll call vote on that motion.
Moller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Motion adopted, seven zero.
Now I go, second reading of the, second reading of the ordinance, please.
An ordinance making supplemental appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Hamilton during fiscal year ending December 31st, 2024, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman?
Make a motion the ordinance be adopted?
Second.
Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by Councilmember Ryan. Roll call vote on that motion.
Moller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Fear?
Lauer.
Yes.
Orders adopted, 7-0.
We now go to agenda item number nine. Two readings of an ordinance involving Coolants Plus and a job creation and tax credit agreement.
An ordinance granting Coolants Plus Incorporated a credit against taxes on income earned by pursuant to the terms and conditions of the job creation and tax credit agreement heretofore authorized by City Council. First of two readings.
Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I move the rules be suspended and said ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second.
Councilmember Nab, second by Vice Mayor Pullman. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7-0.
Second reading of that ordinance now, please.
An ordinance granting Coolants Plus Incorporated a credit against taxes on income earned by pursuant to the terms and conditions of the job creation and tax credit agreement heretofore authorized by City Council. Second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Nab, second by Vice Mayor Pullman. Name of discussion or comments on this one? Hearing none, roll call.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Orders adopted, 7-0.
We go to agenda item number 10. Two readings of emergency ordinance involving salaries.
An emergency ordinance amending and supplementing Schedule A of the City's Classification and Compensation Plan as set forth in Emergency Ordinance Number EOR 2023-12-106, adopted December 13, 2023, as amended from time to time relative to salaries for certain employees and repealing existing Schedule A as set forth in said emergency ordinance. First of two readings.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the rules be suspended and said ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second.
Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Ryan. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7-0.
Second reading of the emergency ordinance.
An emergency ordinance amending and supplementing Schedule A of the City's Classification and Compensation Plan as set forth in Emergency Ordinance Number EOR 2023-12-106, adopted December 13, 2023, and as amended from time to time relative to salaries for certain city employees and repealing existing Schedule A as set forth in said emergency ordinance. Second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Ryan. Roll call vote on that emergency ordinance.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Orders adopted, 7-0.
We now go to agenda item number 11. First reading of an ordinance involving a purchase and sale agreement, 606 Main Street.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a purchase and sale agreement and related actions related to certain real property located adjacent to 606 Main Street, Hamilton, Ohio, 45013. Parcel number P 6411101000045. Save Hamilton property owner Carlos and Sharon Fritas. Purchaser, first reading.
We now go to agenda item number 12, which is a resolution involving the sale of Hamilton Road Salt to the Hamilton City School District.
A resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement for the sale of Road Salt to the Hamilton City School District for the 2024-2025 winter season.
Mayor.
Councilmember Fear.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Fear, second by Councilmember Nab. Discussion or comment on this resolution? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 7-0.
We go to agenda item number 13. Resolution involving an appointment to the Ordnance Review Commission.
A resolution appointing Mark Kyle to serve on the Ordnance Review Commission of the City of Hamilton, Ohio, for the term commencing January 1, 2025 and terminating December 31, 2025.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Nab. Comment on this? Hearing none, roll call.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 7-0.
And item number 14 is a resolution involving a agreement between the City of Hamilton and Animal Friends Humane Society.
A resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to execute an agreement between the City of Hamilton, Ohio, and Animal Friends Humane Society relative to the impoundment of animals relinquished and found running at large within the corporation limits of the City of Hamilton, Ohio.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Ryan. Comments, questions on this one? Roll call vote.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 7-0.
We go to agenda item number 15. It's a resolution making appointments to the Butler County TID.
A resolution reappointing Eric Pullman, Lori Kyle, and appointing Alan Mester to serve on the Board of Trustees of the Butler County Transportation Improvement District for the term commencing January 1, 2025 and terminating December 31, 2026.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Nab, second by Councilmember Ryan. Comments on this one? Hearing none, roll call.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 7-0.
And item number 16, which is a resolution between the City of Hamilton and FCC Foundation.
A resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a project agreement between the City of Hamilton, Ohio, and FC Cincinnati Foundation, a 501(c)(3) public charity for the construction and donation of an artificial turf miniature soccer field, mini pitch, to promote community engagement, physical well-being, and connection among residents.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Fear. Any comments on this one? I just want to say, this resolution says a lot. It talks about this project involving a professional soccer team in Cincinnati with us to promote community engagement, to promote physical well-being, and to connect our residents. They're really a very symbolic, but also heckuva lot of fun project. Any other comments about this one? Roll call vote.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 7-0.
Go to agenda item number 17. Resolution for our calendar for the year 2025.
A resolution establishing the City of Hamilton, Ohio, City Council regular meeting dates for the calendar year 2025.
Mayor.
Councilmember Fear.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
My Councilmember Fear, second by Vice Mayor Pullman. Any comment about our calendar next year? Roll call.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 7-0.
Okay. Audience of the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple items. First, I'd like to acknowledge the announcement earlier today. I had the opportunity to attend the Ohio Department of Development press conference down in Cincinnati where it was announced in round 33 of funding that City of Hamilton was awarded two funding, was awarded funding for two different projects. One, the Schuler-Benninghoff Mill, and then the former Y, WCA in German Village. Both really amazing projects. I mentioned to Mike Pittman, who I talked to earlier today, that I'm sure the dusting of snow this morning, along with the news today, brought the belief of an early Christmas for Lindenwall, for Frank Downey, for Protocol, and for so many residents who have championed for so long for that neighborhood and that community. So very excited to share that news with them. Also, other development news. The Wellhouse Hotel is expected to open here next week. They are working through an issue with their liquor license permit, and it's likely that there will be a need for council to vote on this prior to our first scheduled meeting in January. So I would like to suggest a motion by council that the city clerk notify the Ohio Department of Health, or excuse me, the Ohio Department of Liquor Control that the city has no objections to the liquor permit application for the Lucky Well located at 1 High Street if the applicant requires action prior to a new city council meeting in the first of the year.
That's a motion that's been made and read. Is there a motion, or a first on that motion? That's the right way to do this. Is there a first on that motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Pullman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Nab. Just want to do a roll call vote, just to...
Yes, please, Mr. Mayor.
Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
That motion's adopted, 7-0.
Thank you, Mayor. That was, again, in the interest of expediency and to make sure that this project continues to move forward. I appreciate council's prompt action on that. And then lastly, I just want to note to our residents at home that if they go to the City of Hamilton Facebook page, there are instructions there how to interact with the virtual street paving tour. So 2024 marked a really ambitious year for us in street paving. And I know we said it before, that caused some frustration with the number of streets that we had under construction throughout the city. But we accomplished a lot. And I want to thank our infrastructure team. I want to thank Edwin Porter, as well as the folks who were responsible for this really, really interesting tour. And that would be Debbie Cochran, Emily Johnson, Craig Koger, Pat Yingling, and Matty Watkins. You can literally go onto the website. You can see a map of the entire city, and you can see all the streets that we paved. You can click on those streets, and it'll pull up a picture. And it's actually a slider photo where you can see what the street did look like and now what it looks like after the paving. This was an innovative idea, an improvement upon Edwin Porter's idea. He wanted to actually create a driving tour He wanted to actually create a driving tour where people could drive all over town, but being the engineer of the years, he figured out that it was going to take over an hour, and he didn't think people would be that bought in. So, thank you to Edwin and all our infrastructure team for pushing through this really, really innovative project. Thank you.
Great. Question real quick, so we vote on the motion tonight, it's going to be prepared, I'm going to sign it, and then who does that go to? I mean, there'll be a motion signed, or not, well, basically we did a motion, but is that like a resolution, so to speak?
When I reach out to the, when I reach out to Liquor Control, I typically notify them of either the address or the permit application, and that city council adopted a motion on the specific meeting date that they did not object to the liquor permit, and that's usually satisfactory.
Something in writing that we have to sign, that I have to sign?
We can put that in writing.
The city clerk, it's just a form that the city clerk signs off on, so the action that you took today is sufficient to give him authorization to do that.
That's good enough for the next step to be taken and considered up in Columbus.
It is, thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you. Audience, city council.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Fear.
I don't know if our city manager or our director of safety wants to mention Hamilton Police Department moving to their new home. Talk about it a little bit, or...
Yes, executive director Scott Scormezi would be happy to come up, but I'll save him the trip.
He's coming.
So, it has been, I'll talk while he gets to the mic, it's been a multi-step process, getting everything moved over, getting everything operational, but I did receive some pictures earlier today where they were actually prying the letters off the monument sign on Front Street and literally closing down what was a great facility, a great headquarters, a great building for many, many of us over almost a little over five decades, so since 1977. Director Scormezi?
Yeah, so it's really exciting. Thank council for all your support with that. It's a little sad, actually, the last group of folks that left 331 South Front Street when they were tearing the sign off of there. We both spent a lot of years there, I spent 32 years there in that building. So, the new building is awesome and pretty much has gone without a hitch. We moved patrol there yesterday, so the detective bureau and the administrative officers had been there for about four or five days, and then patrol had their day shift and last roll calls at 331 South Front. Second and third shift started yesterday at the new building on Hanover, and it's, I think the officers love it, it's going to be really nice. I think the citizens will love it, it's been a long time coming.
Beautiful place.
Appreciate everything you guys did to support that.
Yeah, I just want to thank Director Scormezi for his time for overseeing this project, him, assistant chief Brian Robinson, Trent Chenoweth, our current chief, and all the work that they've done to bring this, you know, to get the doors open and get everyone in there. And the court will be moving over here after the first of the year, once the PD's settled in, but again, it's a great facility and really honored by the opportunity to move that forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
This kills me. Anyway, Tommy, Tommy Johns did a great job at Pullman Lanes last Saturday with the Boys and Girls Club, and maybe, I don't know, if you want to get your figures together and come up next meeting and talk about it, because I would love to share with what you did and how much money you raised. You did a great event. We had bowlers all day from most, first shift was what, 12 o'clock, and then we had 4:00, and we had an ongoing bet with Lauer and Joshua, and I think they sandbagged us, but it's...
I did bring in a ringer.
You did bring in a ringer. He was trying, now, he was trying to get Webb, who works there, who is a very good bowler, to get on your team, and I had to stop that because you guys were really trying to get a ringer in, but we fell apart. Mayor Pat and...
IT&amp;T is investigating this right now. Numbers are being reviewed, there is a secret playbook going on.
Michael Ryan, Brad Baker, my son, who actually had the highest score, we were playing who's going to be the highest scorer, my son bowls in Special Olympics, and we should have, he had the highest score, and we looked really bad. We should have had Susan Vaughn there with us because she's a bowler. But we're going to make personal donation, each one of us, to Tommy John's Boys Club, the Boys and Girls Club, and it's not a lot, but we, I hope you raised, you know, it is, we lose, we bow down to Joel Lauer, Joshua Smith, and really, it's your daughter who did, who did the best job out of that. So, but it was a lot of fun, thank you, and you did a great job. I just heard so much good about Tommy, and I mean, I don't know, is he allowed to come up and talk about it, or is...
I have numbers now, you want me to show you?
Yeah, is that okay?
Sure, if you got them.
Yeah, and, but I, he did a, he did an excellent job, it was a great event.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, I appreciate it, and thank you everyone that participated and was there, and I'll say that Joshua Smith walked in pretty confident, he said he could beat your team with his left hand or right hand, you could pick, and it didn't, man, but...
Yeah, I heard that.
We see that, yeah, Joel, it was a setup the whole way. As far as what we raised that night, we raised a lot of funds, and the big thing that we changed this year was doing a gift drive. So, we started wrapping some of the gifts today. We collected over 1,000 gifts for our club members and our teens across Hamilton. So, next week, we're actually, we'll have all of our Christmas parties. Tyler McCleary and his group will sponsor a great buffet for our families, and we might see Santa Claus stop by some of our clubs and help hand out all those gifts that we collected to make sure that youth and teens all across Hamilton have a very Merry Christmas. And tomorrow night, Jim Goodman was gracious enough to give us his location so that people can come by 5:30 to 8:00 at the Spooky Knuckle location from Municipal Brew Works and wrap gifts if they would like to, but the big winner there was our youth and teens. So, irregardless of your score, irregardless of your bet, all of our youth and teens won, so thank you guys very much for participating and for supporting. It was a great event.
It was, it was very good.
Over 200 people came involved, and one of the biggest things, when I moved here two years ago, one of the biggest things I was, my hope to see was people from different neighborhoods, people from different streets that don't normally get along, that don't normally have an opportunity to spend time with each other and to do that, and when you looked across the lane at Pullman's during both sessions, it was, I think, every neighborhood must have been represented, people meeting each other for the first time that do great things in the community that never had crossed paths, they crossed paths at the holiday bulletins, that was a pretty emotional and full circle moment for me, so thank you all for supporting that.
Thank you.
Well, it's amazing how throughout this meeting tonight, the sense of community has been through so many speakers, and that event was a sense of community all by itself. It was, it was really special.
Mr. Pullman.
Yes.
What is your, what is going to be your guys' donation?
We're donating $20 each.
Joshua Smith, myself, and my daughter Olivia will match that.
Good.
And go along.
Well, I figure since I heard rumors you guys were practicing two weeks in events, and, you know, none of us did any, you know...
I was a sixth round draft pick out of Michigan.
Somebody said, you figure since your brother owns a lane, you would know how to bowl, I said, oh, God, I'm going to out and bowl, but I had fun, it was great, it was, can't wait to do it again next year, so, and I hope it's a lot bigger for you, too. You did, you just did incredible, I just, it was just a well-put-together event, Santa Claus was even there.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
2024, and you've heard us all, everybody here in the audience, everybody that's with the city, everybody that supports the city, small businesses, large businesses, neighborhoods, the departments within the city, Tom, chiefs, police, fire, everybody just gets it, and we're hitting home runs daily. The City of Hamilton is such a neat, neat place, a home, and people coming here on purpose, people coming here, as we heard the ladies from Highland Park talking as they orchestrated the turkey trot five years ago, and what it's evolved to today, the turkey drop, what it's evolved to Jim last year, 140, and this year, over 400, you know, we're just doing things right. And other, you've heard me say, other cities are trying to use us as the poster for what